Anybody else want to talk? Nobody wants to talk? Just the three that are signed here? Do you want to talk, sir?
Depends on the topic.
Well, it depends. I mean, if you want to talk about something, write your name down there. Way to record a flex such.
I had a rush in for a bike ride and I wanted to do a...
Jim Rocka? Rockama? Before we call this meeting to an end, Fred, will you offer a prayer for me?
Yes, sir. Father, we do thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to come before you again tonight as a city. We thank you for the many blessings you brought into our lives, into our city. We thank you for the peaceful weekend that we had. We pray, Father God, that you give us wisdom, Father God, to conduct business in behalf of our city and to make good decisions that will benefit all our citizens and those who visit our beautiful city. Thank you, Father God, for today. Thank you for this council and thank you for opening the door wide open for us to address you anytime we please. Amen.
We'll call this meeting to an end at 6:01 PM. Local.
Mayor Hicks.
Present.
Councilor Garcia.
Present.
Councilor Redarte.
Present.
Councilor Lucero.
Here.
Councilor Padilla.
Here.
Will you please stand and join me in the place of worship? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we approve the agenda, I would like to remove item number seven. I undertake a mission to approve the agenda without change. Remove some. Yes. I need a motion for the agenda without change.
I make a motion.
Second.
That's second.
That's right there.
Yes.
Councilor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilor Lucero.
Yes.
Citizens to address the council. Carolyn Newton.
Good evening. I just want to thank everybody who came out and helped support the parade. We were a huge success. So I'm here tonight to ask a question. I want to know why the City of Grants and the City Council decided that they needed to instill fear in the citizens of Grants. As far as I know, there were no threats of outsiders coming in and causing a riot, causing a scene at the parade. So I feel we need an answer. Why did you guys feel that you needed to post this all over the social internet to instill fear in the citizens so they would not come out to the parade?
The mayor spoke to me on two different occasions.
What did I say to you? Before you say that, Laura, I've recorded every conversation we've had.
So did I.
Go ahead. What did I say to you?
So you told me that you were expecting about 300 people from out of town.
No.
You told me that...
300 patriots is what I said.
No.
Yes, I did.
You said 300 people from out of town and that you were anticipating that we might have Antifa.
I did say that.
Black Lives Matters individuals.
Laura, you're lying. This is what I said to Laura. I'm her source, okay? I told her that we were going to have about 300 patriots downtown. And I told her that it would be bad if Antifa or anybody else showed up. Those were my exact words.
He told me that if people came in opposition, we were going to have a malfunction. So I was telling my own family and friends that they shouldn't come downtown.
So the council didn't tell you to put this out?
No.
But yet you put it out with the Grand City Council.
This says the City of Grants, City of Grants and the City Council would like to warn us. It scared my own family. So I want to know why you guys felt you needed to instill fear.
Because it's our job to protect our citizens. And the mayor talked to me twice. Mark was a witness, Michelle and Gloria were witnesses about potential issues he was anticipating. And it finally dawned on me late Friday that I had an obligation. You advertised that you were having a parade, but yet you were telling people that it was a protest. We've all seen what happens at some protests in Albuquerque. A parade, no big deal, right? But a protest might mean that there's going to be confrontation. So that alone made me worry. But the mayor spoke to me on two different occasions in front of other people. I have the conversation recorded as well, telling me that he was anticipating a problem.
No, I never said that.
So was that the only source you had?
I never said that, Carolyn. Let's make that perfectly clear.
One source, the mayor.
I never said that.
Yes, he did.
That's all good.
Does anybody else have a response? You know, because this is all over the internet that it came from the city and the city council.
It doesn't say the city manager, guys. It says all of you.
I have an extra copy if anybody wants to see it.
Let me say something.
Yeah, I did approve that being posted on, you know, wherever it was posted. It was probably based on us not awarding, you know, the parade or approving the parade before the Fourth of July. But nonetheless, I...
Have you read it?
No, I didn't even know it was out there.
Read it into the record.
The City of Grants and the City Council would like to encourage citizens and visitors to avoid being downtown near City Hall, High Street, Santa Bay Avenue, First Street and Second Street on the morning of the Fourth of July. There may be a parade and possibly a protest that is not sanctioned by the city. We understand that this parade may turn into a protest. Per one source, many from, many visitors, or sorry, many from various outside groups who may be in a post are expected to come to town. For your safety and the safety of your families, we recommend that citizens avoid the downtown area at this time.
I would like to speak, I was there, of course, when the mayor came in and he did say the things that Laura says he said.
The mayor said that if they showed up, it would be bad.
Yes, you talked about 300 people coming, you talked about protesters and Black Lives Matter and Antifa and that if something went wrong, there was going to be...
It would be bad.
Yes, exactly.
I said that. Okay, but I didn't say they were going to...
I just don't want Laura to be called a liar.
I said if they did come, it would be bad. I didn't say they were coming. I didn't say we anticipated them. I said if they did show, it would be bad. That was my statement. Period.
Here's a copy for you guys if you want it. You know, I didn't appreciate this going out. We worked so hard on this parade and to instill more fear in the citizens was unnecessary. The parade went on without a hitch. No issues. Everybody was peaceful. They social distanced. We had a great time.
Yes, we did.
So this was unnecessary to instill more fear in the citizens when there's already so much here already. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Carolyn. Aaron Dean.
I was there. I invited a lot of, a lot of veterans from out of town to come in here. Because I know Fred, you're a veteran. But every one of you guys sitting up there, you took the oath to support the Constitution of the United States of America. What you've shown me as a businessman in this town is you don't have the guts to back up the Constitution. Do you know what it means when you say, "I do"? I do. I put my life on the line for the United States against communism in 1970. We went to Vietnam to fight communism. That's exactly what the hell is turning in right now. This is turning, you look at your puppets. Eric, your business didn't suffer when they closed down the city. Mine did. The state police came and made me close my carpet store, said it wasn't essential business. But Home Depot, Home Depot and Lowe's was here.
I have multiple businesses. They shut down my businesses too, okay? So one of them stayed open. I stayed open and I had other ones. I suffered and I sit on both sides.
But, you know, this is, to think about what's happening to the people. And you sat there at the last meeting, I saw you on the line. Your constituents asked you, Eric, you, Rob, they asked you to go ahead and have the parade, right? Is that right, Fred? You said so. It was on there.
Yeah, there was a couple of people there.
Okay, but people said, they voted you in, but you didn't want to do what the people asked.
There's people. I have numerous people that didn't want a parade.
I don't, I have not heard anybody in this town that didn't want to have a parade. And the deal was, it was advertised as a peaceful protest. Mayor Hicks was on the radio Friday. And he said exactly what he said. If Antifa or Black Lives Matters comes in, there's going to be enough veterans here, it could get bad. But we had the people to back up, wasn't, we were not going to let them tear up Grants. We weren't going to let them tear down any monuments or anything. We would have put a stop to it and right now. We all know what it is to fight. If you guys want to have a war, we know how to fight a war. But start working with the people. That's what you got elected for, for God's sake.
Thank you, Aaron. Ronnie Pines.
Thank you. My name's Ronnie Pines. Would like to take a quick moment to thank all the veterans, men and women who served this great country. I don't think what happened on the Fourth of July, Saturday, here is what they had in mind to celebrate Independence Day in this country. I'm ashamed. I really am. I was there as part of it. I was glad to be a part of it, but that's not what this is supposed to be about in this great country. I want to know two, three things. I've got some questions. I want to know how many of you guys attended any of the activities in Grants on Saturday? Okay, I didn't see very many, I guess. So the mayor, didn't see Eric, but...
I went out to rodeo for three days straight.
Okay.
How many did you work at? Very nice shirt.
What, John? What are you talking about?
Anyway, a couple of other quick points because I don't want to use up all my time unnecessarily. But first of all, we don't need approval. We, the people, don't need for the city or anyone else to condone or sanction a peaceful protest. So let's get that straight. We are the people. We're the government. You guys are representatives that we elected, okay? Let's get that straight. We're off track way back down the road. Two, three other things I'd like to know, and this is getting some dollars and cents. Is there any idea at this point, how many employees are going to be laid off in the near future of the city? Because of the shortfalls on the grocery seats tax and lodgers, any number? Yeah?
Do you have evidence that it's going to be lowered?
Pardon?
Do you have evidence that it's going to be lowered?
I didn't say it was. I asked, is there a number? I'm asking a question. Anybody got a number yet?
There's not a number yet because, you know, what we have next...
So the answer is no. Okay. This is my three minutes, okay? Let's get that straight.
A little bit more time.
Pardon?
Give you a little bit more time.
Okay, go ahead.
So what are you talking about versus seat tax? You're asking what shortfall we're going to have?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a pretty fair question, yeah. I'm a contributor of grocery seats tax and City of Grants, so yeah, it's a pretty fair question.
I would say, we don't know yet.
Okay, that's all I, that's what I'm asking.
We don't know yet, but we have some assumptions. I'm asking the business owners all through town, what was their best month that they had to date? And it was May. May, we will have that number probably July 15th, 16th.
Okay.
So we don't know yet, but we hopefully, that's in this opinion, we have high hopes that we can get back to where we were.
Okay, just make sure the answer is, then, "I don't know." Okay, that's all I need. Has there been anyone in the city government, manager, city manager, anyone else, city employees, that's had, not been paid? Got their paychecks since this pandemic started?
Every one of them.
No.
None of them has been paid.
That's what I'm asking. Has everybody been paid?
Okay.
Yes, okay. Okay, how many, so there's no one went without a paycheck for three or four months during this pandemic episode? Is that correct?
It worked for the city, Rob.
Okay. Have you checked with any of the small businesses, about how long they've been without paychecks? Who's been out, talked to the small business community besides myself and Diane Rowe, Carolyn Newton? Anybody?
I hear.
Wait.
Our marketing coordinator has called multiple businesses every week. Our senior citizen center has called multiple citizens to check on how their status is.
I'm talking about the small businesses that ring cash records, is what I'm talking about, okay? Let's be specific.
That's what I'm talking about as well.
Okay. I do...
You got involved, maybe from the city, one of your small businesses?
No, no, I went by the Chamber Commerce, April 21st. Tried to get a signature to support our small businesses in this community, just like Aaron Dean just pointed out. And they're locked up. The doors closed. I'm a member of the Chamber folks. See none, hear none, don't know where they are. I don't know if they're home under bed with the sheep syndrome. I don't know where they're at. I know where they're not. And that's a little disturbing from a, from a business guy that's done everything he can. And I'm not the only one. There's a whole long list to support this community from top to bottom. We just went through, what, how many months ago? Three, four months ago? $2 million that the people of this community was asked to step up and vote for to make improvements to water sewer systems. That's money that these young businesses aren't generating, guys. They can't do that. They can't make money if they're closed. They sure can if they're threatened by the government, especially the governor. Governor has no business here. Governor doesn't sign my paycheck. She's never been in my place of business and I don't care if she ever does, quite honestly. And as far as I'm concerned, every person in the state of New Mexico is essential. I don't know who made the governor, God, jury and trial, you know, to say who is and who isn't essential. That's a crock. Sorry. We all pay property taxes. We all contribute. If we didn't, we wouldn't have a government here today or at the county or at state level. I want to know what happened. Did any of you guys read? This is, this was done on May, sorry, April 19th. I submitted this to the city clerks, public record. I want to know how many of you seen this and read it. This is a petition to the mayor and the city council of Grants for help. We're bleeding. You can only bleed so long and you die. The City of Grants is struggling on revenues. The, the state is, the city of Albuquerque. This is across the board, guys. It's not just Grants. And on top of that, the small businesses, small businesses, and there's people in his room beside me, got snitched on. We're putting up with that as well. Being threatened by our governor and then we've got snitches calling the state police and telling them to come and do an inspection on us, investigation on my place of business. Fred, you were there. Did I do anything illegal? Was I selling illegal drugs or anything? I told you, thank you for coming by and supporting our small business, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Okay. I want to know who read this because there's 84 businesses. This lady right here, where is she? Diane Rowe, and I, we spent 36 hours of our time pounding payment. We didn't do this over the internet. We didn't send smoke signals. We went towards the door. And we asked people, are you wanting help from our city? We could govern ourselves. We don't need the governor. We have, we have a fine police department, fine police chief, fire department. We don't need the governor. We asked you guys for help so we could open up our business on April 27th. Did any of you guys read this? Did you guys read our request? This is submitted, this is public document. It's here in the city hall. This is my copy. I can tell you when it's dated, stamped and timed and everything. I want to know where you guys are. These are small businesses that are hurting. They ask you for help. And it's not just Ronnie. It's not just one old guy that's bitching and mudding the ground. We went to 84 businesses. So if you haven't read it, I can, I can share this with you. This is my copy. This is the original. Out of 84 businesses, guess how many said no? They would not sign this. One. That tells me the people that spoke, you guys. You guys are elected officials. It's not just a couple, Rick. It's 83 businesses. They all have license in this city. What is it about that you don't understand? They're trying to ask you for help. So we try to have...
I tried to give it to him, Ronnie. God be his great glory.
I appreciate that. I do. I appreciate that.
And we're still fighting.
I know. I'm sorry that you had to endure that by yourself and I'm sure that...
By myself too, baby.
That the businesses are still trying to endure what they're enduring too. I'd like to know when you guys are going to step up to the plate, tell the governor, sorry. You didn't elect the people in this city elected me. All too often, that's the case. We have five elected people. I know every one of you guys. I don't know why you bow down to the governor. I don't get that. I'm sorry. You guys, small businesses that are hurting, closing, your revenues are down. So I don't want to see city employees laid off. I'd like to see what the letter's going to look like when you send them, uh, "Don't need your services any further." Open everybody else, the city, you know, the city managers, all the others, and keep getting their checks. We don't need you guys because our revenues are short. Why are revenues short? What could you have done to keep their jobs as a possibility? No guarantees. I understand. So I just want to know if you had read this, very disappointed that this is what it's come to, that we don't have the support of the small business community. Hurt all my life. Small businesses are the backbone of this country. As far as I'm concerned, I've told this to the press multiple occasions. The backbone of the small businesses is being broken. That's what's happening. So I would appreciate it if you guys would take a hard look, read this, check it out, see all that's on the list. This is public information. Maybe check that oath that you took, like Aaron Dean pointed out, what you, what you signed up for. Eric, you and I had this discussion before, before you were elected and after you were elected. This is going to be some tough calls. I guarantee you what, it's tough to tell your employees that don't teach you anymore for three months because the governor says, "I'm not essential." They're trying to put their kids through college, buy meals, make house payments. Everybody else in the government seems to be getting the checks. And where does that money come from? Taxpayers. You need to be helping the small businesses that make that happen. That's what I'm asking you for help. I'm doing it in public. I should have done it before now. This should have spoken for itself. April 19th. April 19th, guys, up and on.
I'm here to be, Ron.
So I just want to thank you. Thank you for the extra time. I came here not to call names. I didn't come here to be a bitcher, a drapper. I want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem, guys. We need to get the City of Grants on track. We lost jobs out here at power plant. Jobs getting ready to close down, coal mine. And we got snitches running down the highway, snitching on small businesses, trying their best to stay in business so they can make it. Where are you guys? We need help. The city needs help. We've always been fighters. How long have I heard that? I've been here 45 years. Oh, Grants is, they'll survive. You know, we're tough here. We'll make it. We'll stick together. It's not looking that way to me, guys. Sorry. I call them like I see them. Pretty straight shooter. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. One more. There was a, an email sent in by Beverly Michael that she wanted read into the record. I didn't allow it because of some of the statements that were in it, calling me violent, that I act violent here and stuff like that. If she wants to address the council, she could come here and address the council like Ronnie and these other people did, okay? And on that note, we'll move on to public comment and discussion on the charter compliance. Anybody out there want to talk about charter?
We are not.
No, Jim wants to stop when the, when the police come up. Okay? When, when the police come up, Jim wants to talk.
We have another speaker also?
No.
Oh, come on up, chief. Now, who's the other speaker?
Never mind. I don't know.
Okay.
I was just giving that information.
Yeah, Jim, you want to speak when the police item comes up though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So not now?
You're up. You're up. Go ahead. He's, he's talking about down here at the end, police and fire funding, the last item on the deal, right, Jim? Yeah.
Okay, so, did you call?
You go ahead. Go ahead. Give, give your report, chief.
Okay, well, I gave you guys a report. Hold on. I didn't think I was going to be talking.
That's okay. You're on out. I gave a report. Give it.
Sorry for the confusion. I thought you guys were going to ask me questions about something, but, um... Here's my monthly report. I've been, I've kind of pared it down. I've met with each councilman, uh, the city manager, the mayor at different times, talking about our reports. I was suggested by Councilman Garcia to pare it down and not make it so complex. The city manager also requested this. So what we've done is I've separated the two reports, my patrol division and detective division into separate, separate items. So if you look at the first pages there, page one of the patrol report, it gives weeks one, two, three, four, chronologically like that. You'll see the arrests, you'll see the number of reports we took during that, that first week. The number of arrests and the citations given during that week for each week. And then the total for the, the running total for the month. At the bottom, you'll see a total calls for service. So calls for service are, we need you to go over here for this reason. We need you to go over here for that reason. And so not every call generates an incident report. Usually what, what it is, is incident reports are, a crime has been committed and we, either we have enough for an arrest or we don't have enough for an arrest and we conduct an investigation. And that's, so that's what you see there on the middle one is reports. So for the, for the month of, for the month of June, there's 164 reports and 1,871 calls for service. So let me just, let me just say this because, and I won't take up too much time, sirs and madam. But call for service, whether it's shots fired that turns out to be nothing, a loud noise, music call, loud music coming from a neighbor, whatever. Not just one cop goes, okay? Immediately, we send a couple, a couple of different cops. And what happens, because what ends up happening, almost when you don't expect it, but is it turns to something. Somebody's got a warrant, somebody's going to be combative and all of a sudden we get an arrest. So usually for the most part, well, during the day, we have myself, my two lieutenants, the detective division, the school resource officer, but then we have the patrol division. Patrol division's anywhere from a sergeant and two patrolmen through the morning until noon. And then after that, another patrolman comes out until, until 6:00 PM. Those, the day shift goes home then. But usually the calls for service stuff is answered by the patrol division. Not exclusively, but they're the first ones that get sent. If it's something, we had a, we had a home invasion here a couple of months ago. Everybody came out to that. We got the suspects and made arrests within three minutes of the call. But we had myself, the lieutenants, the detectives, everybody came up and we, and we cornered the people and we got that carload of suspects. So as things have gone through COVID-19 lockdown, we had a lot of incidents of theft, shoplifting at our, at our stores. We always have shoplifting, so don't get me wrong. It's just we, they were a lot more aggressive now. And so that's, we're, we're having a lot of drug activity. We don't have a narcotics division, okay? And so what we do have is, in, for the last five, six months or so, we started doing the activity for narcotics investigations through my patrol division, okay? Because we don't have extra money to hire narcotics agents. So in that, we've done a few search warrants and raids. We just did one at Motel 6. I don't even, you know, if you all remember my report from two months ago. There was a shooting at Motel 6. And what I wanted to do is get on the agenda one of these days and just show you the video of that shooting. And you can literally, you can see five different vehicles involved in setting up a drug buy and ambushing. They were going to ambush this dealer and the way, they even had dropped off somebody before and it was, it was too complex for what we have locally. And so we've been watching some of the motels and doing, doing things that way, doing surveillance and, um... Yeah, we're, Grants is, is kind of, it seems, it seems that there's a lot of organized drug dealing stuff going on. So when we're asking for different things, like I talked to the councilman about possibility of getting encryption, encryption stuff. It's expensive, but something, we're catching a lot more people with scramblers, scanners, I'm sorry. And so anyway, I digress. So let's go back to my report. So pages two, three, four of that first report, it really breaks down the calls for service. Now, the calls for service stuff comes from dispatch. So whatever they, whatever they deem as a call for service, they're going to put, and they're not going to necessarily put all of our arrests in those calls for service, all of our warrant stuff. They just put what they put because dispatch does not work for us. Okay, but this gives you a general idea of... Okay, but this gives you a general idea, uh, this, this breakdown, uh, gives you an idea of what, what, uh, we're, we, we face every month. Um, the second report, uh, which is, which you'll see is gonna be the Grants Police Department Detective Division Monthly Report. It breaks down each, uh, the detective, uh, that's worked in the report. Almost seventy-five, eighty percent of my detective division activity you'll see is CYFD referrals on child abuse, child sexual abuse, child neglect. They do a report, uh, CYFD, their, their criteria is, uh, a P, it's, it's an emergency or a P-one, P-two, or, or a screenout. We do reports on every one of them. A screenout means it's not enough for CYFD to take any interest or do any involvement. I personally, as a detective, have put several people in prison on these screenouts. So my detective division does a report on, generates a report, makes contact on every one of these CYFD referrals, plus they assist, uh, patrol division with the more complex cases. Um, as you read through that, you can see, uh, it's, it's, uh... The far left is the date that, of the case, the case number, the incident type, the victim, the suspect, the disposition, and finally, whether, on the far right, is where it has been closed or not. Um, it's pretty self-explanatory. I'm definitely up for any recommendations, if anything, any of you all would like to see or would like, uh, to see added to this report. Um, would, I used to get it to you all quarterly, and then, uh, after speaking with several of you, I, I realized that monthly was probably gonna be the easiest way. And that way, there's no doubt that your police department is definitely working for the City of Grants. Um, we've come a long way under my supervision. We work for you all, we work for the citizens. Um, we're proud to be, uh, conscientious, upright department, ethical, um, and hardworking. We, our guys make mistakes, but we, as an administration, are quick to jump on those, investigate them, find out if the officer merely made a mistake, or there's been some abuse of power. Um, and so that's, that's what I have at this point. I stand for any questions from council.
Questions? Thank you for this weekend.
Thank you, chief.
You did a great job, Jim.
You betcha, sir.
For this weekend. Thanks for keeping us safe.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, now, charter compliance, are we all at least eight?
We are not in compliance with the charter because a comment from a citizen that was emailed in is not being allowed to be read.
Okay, we're not in compliance. Even though the email had stuff in it that ain't true, that's okay. We'll be in compliance next week. Our regular city council meeting minutes? Anybody have any corrections for that? I'll take a motion.
Make the motion to approve the, uh, city minutes for June twenty-second.
Second.
Second.
Council of Earth.
Aye.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Sel? Council Pariya?
Yes.
Cool. Declaration of Vacation and Abandonment. Can you hear me okay?
Can you hear me?
Mister Mayor, uh, members of the city council, city manager. Um, I just will read this, uh, statement on the partial vacation abandonment of Lubbock Avenue. We have, uh, a representative of the Janison family. We also have, uh, Mister Walter Meach, uh, who would like to, uh, speak on this also. Uh, B and M Rentals LLC is requesting a partial vacation of Lubbock Avenue. Lubbock Avenue runs from Ash Street to Mesa Boulevard. Only a portion of the road was developed, in this case, the portion of Lubbock Avenue that runs in front of, of the apartments. The other portion of the road was never developed and in researching it, uh, not used by any regular or consistent traffic. It was also found that the eastern portion of the undeveloped part of Lubbock Avenue is blocked off by concrete barriers. The barriers were placed in two thousand and two for erosion control. But, uh, they will be removed so that there will be access from the developed portion of Lubbock to the undeveloped portion of, of road, which would then give access to partial R-one-four-six-four-seven Roosevelt Plaza. Roosevelt Plaza would still have access as well from Mesa Boulevard as notated on the attached, uh, parcel map from the county assessor's site. All parcels surrounding the por, uh, the portion of the road requested for vacation, uh, notated on the map, are owned by B and M Rentals LLC.
Questions?
So that's, uh, that road won't be basically abandoned, right?
Yes.
Used for, are we gonna abandon the whole?
Pardon me?
The whole road or just between the two black sections?
No.
Just the portion?
How much of the road, Chairman?
It's just, if you look on that map that you're given on there, it's on the parcel map, yeah. You'll see there's, um, just between the two black marks in that where it says vacate to request, that's where they're requesting the vacation portion, just that portion. The other portion would still be an undeveloped road, and Mister Meach has said that he would take out the concrete barriers, and he can tell you why the concrete barriers were put up originally back in two thousand and two because he was asked to by the cur, the past. Um, John Rodrick, code enforcer, they talked, he can tell you more about that. So it's just that small portion, and all those portions are surrounded by the LM relative, uh, LLC properties. And they would still have access if granted, off of Mesa Boulevard, just, um, there's a little alleyway in that that goes behind and it goes to the parcel for Roosevelt Plaza. They would still have access off Mesa Boulevard there, and they would have access at that point where they take the concrete barriers off, off of Lubbock as well.
I got a question, please. Um, the owner, can you hear me? The owner of, uh, R-one-four-six-four-seven? What's your intentions if, uh, we approve to vacate this road and we leave that partial right there? What, what's your intentions to develop it or, or what's your concern about this road?
Mister Adam?
Mister Adam, that's for you.
Well, uh, we're hoping that you don't allow the abandonment of this road. That road provides access to the back of our property, um, to both Ash and to Mesa and its dedicated legal access that's been there since we built the property forty years ago. And there's really no reason to abandon it to benefit another property owner, to enhance his property at the expense of our property by losing access.
Okay, this is just...
Now, I understand.
This is what I got.
I understand that it's not used frequently, but, you know, the applicant talks about usability and ease of development in the future if you abandon it. Well, what about ease of development in the future of our property if we decide to redevelop it? We would like to maintain the access that is dedicated legal access made by a subdivision plat, and it's always been there, and it's ours.
Well, here's my thoughts on this. So Mister Meach wants to expand his business out here, uh, which I'm in favor. Um, he, he basically has agreed that he wanted to cut it in half. I don't see the city ever paving this road for access, and I don't, I don't see any benefit or economic growth that we can get from this city. I cleaned that lot about three or four years ago before Mister Meach owned it. There you had, we had that lot that Mister Meach had, we had that alleyway, and there was a lot of the property that was like on yours that, since I was there, I decided to cut it down too. What I found in that lot was condoms. I found needles, alcohol bottles, and something very disturbing, some little girl's panties. And I will tell you that if we want to develop something and a business owner, and it makes sense to develop it, to make our city safer, I'm all for it, sir. So here's my, my thoughts to you. You got thirty days. If you give me a business plan, as council, on what you want to do to develop that piece of property, then maybe we'll have consideration. But if not, I make a motion to the city council that we give Mister Meach the whole thing, the whole thing. So for your fairness, sir, I, I ask if you have a business plan that you want to give us to help your business to produce grocery receipts tax in our community, then you got thirty days. So I ask the council to table this unless you decide not to at this moment.
Okay, right there, hang on, you got a motion to table this. Do I get a second? Before we go any further? You got a motion to table this. Do I get a second? Going once?
We have some comments, though.
Not, not until the motion's made. The motion's been made, guys. Going once?
I'll make a motion in a second.
Table it, table it. Fred?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
It's tabled for thirty days. Okay? It's tabled for thirty days. You got thirty days to come up with a business plan and submit it to the City of Grants to what you're gonna do with that property and how you're gonna move forward. Thank you, Mister Meach.
He would just, uh, ditch there.
Yeah, that's all that's ever been. Thank you. On the TV screen, and we'll move it on. Mister Adam? Thank you. Code enforcement report.
Uh, Mister Mayor, members of the city council, uh, madam manager, I'm Robert Windhorst, and I'm the code enforcement officer. Um, I just want to say, just real quickly about the police department. How much I enjoy working with each of these officers. Anytime I need their help, they are always there, always friendly, always professional, and always, um... I always feel like I'm protected wherever I go. And, um, I'm grateful for them. Um, I think it's a, it's a bad thing that we're doing across the country, uh, trying to say that these officers are not worth it and that we should defund them and, and not have police officers. I don't want to live in a country like that. It'll be a country filled with mayhem and crime, and I'm grateful for our Grants Police Department. And, and, uh, they are worth everything that we, we pay for their protection. Um, you have, before you, my monthly report. Um, there was just a few things I wanted to share with you at the beginning, and then I'll have some closing comments. But, um, we, we have done some things in the last month that have been really, really good. I, I want to thank our city workers, uh, the road department, the, uh, maintenance department, um, Jacobs. I want to, I want to thank all of them because we all work together to make the city better. Up on Johnson Street, uh, recently, uh, Mark Tashima and the road crew, they cleaned from, uh, down Laguna, from, uh, Chavis to Ju, uh, to, uh, let's see, where was it, Johnson Street? Cleared out the ravines, which hadn't been cleared out in a long time. Took out all the garbage, the tires, cut down the, the trees, the weeds, and cleaned it up. All the things that the city has been doing to prevent flood surge problems, um, flood plain problems, has been amazing. And I just want, I want you to know that, uh, the employees of the city are doing their part. Up here, we're doing something else on the Loma. We've been, we've been concentrating more on the Loma the last month because a lot of people have said to us, "It seems like you forget about us, that you don't want to be up here." Well, sometimes when you're being surrounded by a group of them and they're saying, "What are you doing in my neighborhood?" That might be one of the reasons we're not up there a lot, but we've decided regardless, we're going to clean up the Loma. And at the very end of Gavel Dome, there has been some homes that have burned and have been a problem, and they have had high walls and their tires, hundreds of tires, maybe a couple thousand around this property. We have decided that we, there's not a lot that we can do because of the, um, you know, the law that we have, uh, what's it?
Anti-donation.
Anti-donation. But these people have had something happen to them. They've had a fire that's destroyed their home, and they've got all this junk. So what do they do? Most of them do not have the money to clean it up, and that's why that place has gotten to be so filthy. So we made a deal with them. Um, I'm on the board of, as well as the mayor, of the Northwest New Mexico Solid Waste Authority. And our board passed a resolution stating that, that the, um, Solid Waste Authority would help city municipalities, um, to take care of things that can't generally be done because of the budget crisis that we are in right now. And so as a result, we have taken, um, I have had dumpsters from Solid Waste Authority. They have provided them to clean up tires, to clean up the building that, uh, the buildings that have fallen. And this is the area right over McDonald's. You can see McDonald, you can see the golden arches from there. It's really a nice view. But, um, so we've been taking care of this, and they have, they have, they have paid for themselves uh, for four or five waste management thirty-yard dumpsters. So far, we've gotten them two, uh, forty-yard dumpsters to clean up this area, to clean up their burned-out house, and to clean up their tires. This will save the city a lot of money. We also did the same thing in MLC. We got dumpsters. I thought, don't ask me to measure anything. I thought that it would take one or two forty-yard dumpsters to, to clean up all the tires that we had at MLC. It ended up taking six. But it's all cleaned up now. And so I just want the people of the Loma that live up there to know that we are there. We already have cleaned up maybe four or five different dumps that were up there in the past few years. Want them to know that we are committed to helping them make their community as clean as possible. It's been nice going up there and seeing that they are raking and shoveling and picking up trash, and that they're taking pride in their home and in their neighborhood. This is what we want everyone in Grants to do. And that's the whole purpose of code enforcement, not to lord over everybody and boss them around and tell them, "You get this done, or I'm gonna take you to court and we're gonna take your money from you." It's about helping to touch people in their hearts that they, that they may want to do the right thing. Not just because they're compelled, but because it's the right thing to do. So I just wanted you to know about this, that this is going on. We've also had compliance from different businesses. Uh, in our area around Walmart, where we had some issues, Speedy's Car Wash. Um, this is over by Walgreens. Now, there's part of their property at the end of this. This is the corner that goes across the street to, um, Taco Bell. Uh, they are going to, they are gonna come and they're gonna get it cleaned up. Uh, this has been a difficult, different, difficult situation to rem, uh, to take care of with Walgreens. Because we are so far out in the boondocks that they forget about us. But now they know that we're here, they are coming over in the next few weeks, and they're gonna also spray the weeds with a sterilant so that we don't have a continued problem. And then there's, uh, what's the next one, Mark?
Right there.
Oh, same thing. So anyways, we've had, we've had, uh, the Best Western. We've had Taco Bell spray their weeds. We have had, um, Asian buffet. We have had Asian Buffet take care of their property. We've had Autozone clean up their property. And it looks very, very nice. And we're going to keep working throughout the summer. I would ask if it's possible at all to see if you could find us a little money since we're not going to be doing any demolitions, it looks like for a while. But I'd like to see us get some more weed killer so that we can continue to spray and to keep these weeds cleared in the area. Oh, there was one thing that I forgot to mention to you about about the savings to the city on the abatement of this house up on the Loma that is being cleaned up. I figured with the tires and everything, about thirty-five thousand dollars to do that. And we're just requiring them to put in the labor. I've gone up there when there had been twelve people up there working on it, so.
So Robert, we had the old fire station on Wayne
Yes.
scheduled to be next on demolition, have we gotten back an asbestos testing yet?
Yes. Shannon?
We got back a quote for asbestos testing, it's going to cost almost thirteen thousand dollars. This was right before the whole COVID thing and shutting us down and that. We're trying to work now that people are starting up again, trying to get more quotes because we do need at least two more quotes because of the dollar amount. So I've actually, I reached out to the other one I had requested a quote from as well, I sent them another email actually Friday to see if we can get that quote. And we're going to try and get another one as well because it did hit kind of high.
So is that a quote to remove asbestos or just test it?
That's the quote, just to test it and abate.
And abate?
Yes.
Okay, because yeah, I was trying to remember on the old.
Actually, I'm sorry, we did actually get a test, that's to abate.
To abate, okay, okay. Because I was going to say, I didn't think we paid that much on some previous testing, so that's to abate.
Yes.
So that's actually thirteen thousand's not too bad for that size of building compared to some that we've done, so. But yeah, you'll need two more.
Yeah, we do need two more quotes.
Okay.
Questions?
How much is that rubber, that weed killer? How much do you need?
Shannon? Is she in?
Right now, if we order just another thirty jugs in that, which are only two-point-five-gallon jugs, it's going to be over three thousand dollars, a little over three thousand.
But I must say that it does work, it's probably been, we can't even begin to imagine the savings that we have in labor from having to cut weeds down. And now that we have fewer employees, the weed killer works and it's safe.
And normally, on a normal year, we usually do order twice on the weed killer. We'll have a little bit usually by the end of the season, by September, just a little bit left to get started on the next season when it starts come spring. And gives us enough time to start getting more in, but we usually do do about two orders in out of sixty cases.
So are we trying to focus more on emergent weeds? I know personally, I hate to see brown weeds that are still there, I'd rather us get them before they emerge to sterilize the ground. Because a brown weed looks just as bad as a green weed to me, so to me, it's more helpful if we do the emergent, are we trying to focus more on that?
We have been using the emergent and it is, it's very good. It's important to get the weeds down and to kill them when they're green. Because when they start sending their seed pods out, then that's when we have the tumbleweeds flying all over the place. And that's what we're trying to avoid. And we have really gone after the Russian thistle and tried to eliminate it wherever we can. And it has made a big difference in our city. And I would encourage you, if you can do that, to do that, I think it's well worth the money.
Any other questions? Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Noise ordinance.
So in your packet, you have a replacement for our current noise ordinance. Over the years, we've had lots of complaints from citizens that they feel like the current ordinance doesn't serve us well. And the reason is the timeframe in there from the time. So the old ordinance on page two, it starts talking on paragraph B about the times that people are not allowed to do certain activities that make loud noises. And the timeframe, we have changed from eight PM to seven AM. It used to be the old ordinance has ten PM to seven AM. Now, I had a woman call this week and she's recommending that we don't have any timeframe in there that if people are being unreasonable and playing loud music, no matter what time of day it is, that you shouldn't be able to hear your neighbors something like their stereo in your living room. And so she felt like we should take the time out altogether. Another thing we added was on page four, the very last paragraph, that gives a little bit of options for ongoing noises that are any time of day. Basically, that are disturbing the peace for people living in neighborhoods, basically. Other than that, oh, we also added to have the code enforcement be able to assist with going to check on these complaints to assist the police because we know our police department has much more serious things to go to than somebody complaining about the noise at their neighbors.
How many complaints on the Fourth of July, Chief?
Several, sir. One from council, the councilman, and then several citizens. During the Fourth of July, though, it seemed like this year, I don't know about your neighborhood,
It's insane, guys.
But my neighborhood?
I thought it was back in.
There exploding bombs.
I really did, that's how bad it got.
Huge fireworks were allowed to be set off here, not just the bomb bombs.
So, yeah.
They got to stay up all the time, huh?
So no, we did get several noise disturbance calls.
A lot of times the people will tell me that officers come and they're like, "Well, we can only do something if it's between the hours of, if it's after ten PM." And so we want to give some options. And I think the officers are pretty good about determining, you know, is this a legitimate complaint? Are people being unreasonably loud? Because, you know, some people are very particular, might have very petty complaints, but you know, when you have a neighbor that plays their stereo or they have a band and they're playing every day and keeping you awake, you should be able to do something about it.
Especially for us retired people that sleep all day.
Yeah, yeah. Or people who work nights and are trying to sleep.
Chief, let me ask you a question, please.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I know that it's adding more to your plate by addressing this. You know, on the priority levels, I guess if you want to place it that way, how how priority would it be for, let's say a neighbor calls, says, "Hey, my neighbor's got his stereo, you know, two o'clock in the morning," is that, how is that on a priority level?
Well, so if we're on a priority one type call, domestic violence or fight or something, we may not get to a noise disturbance immediately. So it just depends on what we have going at the time. There's some days where literally we're thirty calls into the day and it's just hopping. And the cops are running around town doing different things. But when we get a call, noise disturbance, nothing's happening, like the night of the Fourth of July, Councilman Musaro called me, said, "What time is this going to end?" And so.
It's about two-thirty when it ended, well, it was a little after eleven.
Yeah, so.
After midnight?
And, you know, when he called me and woke me up, no, I'm just kidding, sir. I was awake, I was awake and ready to answer. But these things are still going off by where I live. And when I called the sergeant, he kind of like laughed a little bit, like they're all over town. And I'm like, "Well, just go up here to Washington area, Mount Taylor and take a look, tell the people that are."
They was standing there, they were looking at him going off a ghost now.
Yeah, and so, but to answer, I'm sorry, Councilman Rolarte, but so it is a call we go to and we try to get there quick. And I'll tell you, and the reason why is this, is okay, so you have somebody playing music, you don't really know what's going on over there. We get there, we'll send, like, we'll send a couple cops. And if they're not busy. And make contact with the people that are doing the loud disturbance. And then make sure, and then a cop usually goes over and talks to the complainant and listens from their perspective of what they're hearing. Because, you know, we're trying to protect everybody's rights to whatever. So the request of, you know, we want a noise ordinance with no time limits, it's not really reasonable because daylight hours for sure are working hours, so you know, you've got somebody with a jackhammer across the street or a lawnmower and, you know, you've got the retired folks that don't, you know, they sleep late or whatever. And, you know, all of a sudden now, that's when it becomes unreasonable. But again, the eight PM or nine PM, you know, kind of, most of the time, the city council rolls up its streets around nine o'clock and the people that are out are people we're kind of like looking for anyway. So when we do get those calls, we kind of hop on it pretty quick.
And what kind of consequences come with violations?
Well, I'm not sure, so it's a petty misdemeanor, we sign them into municipal court. And so.
Do you know what kind of consequences?
It says up to five hundred dollar fine, I'm sure that they probably, the judge probably starts on a low one amount, she might even give a warning and then, okay, now it's hundred bucks, and then the next time I see you, it comes again, but up to five hundred.
Like, I know we, that I know of, I can't speak for all my officers right now, but that I know for the City of Grants, we've never arrested anybody out of it, but I know in the county, if we get called to your house a couple times for the same kind of thing, usually we go back, we arrest the homeowner. Because if it's a loud party or something, because with the county, we're going, you know, all over. And if we're having to go to this residence in San Rafael or Blowout Village, we need to make sure we mitigate that as soon as possible, so, yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Any other questions?
Walter, you got a question?
Yeah, I know you guys are talking about fireworks and music and stuff, but this also affects our industry. We are in the construction industry and when people pour concrete, they pour it early in the morning. You know, at five, five-thirty, six o'clock in the morning. And I've had, even with the ordinance that you've had, you know, I've had people that have complained about our trucks being out that early. And so if you even tighten it even more, it's shutting us down and affecting our business and affecting our industry. So I, you know, I need you to think about that in reference to, you know, whether you put a waiver in reference to the type of work that's being done, that it's not fireworks, it's not music, this is a concrete truck that's out there, they have to mix the truck, it's making loud noise, but it does affect our industry, so it's more than just the little area that you're talking about, it's a whole nother part of the industry that's out there, yeah. And it falls back on us and can affect our revenue in reference to what we're capable of doing.
On the note of what Mr. Meach said, I would entertain a motion to table this and rework it around the businesses that.
Let me ask you, Mr. Meach, something real quickly. How critical is it for when you pour concrete in any given location that you have to be there by a certain timeframe?
The earlier in the morning that you place concrete, the more time you have to work it and you don't have to worry about it setting up so fast on you. The later you wait in the day, the quicker the concrete dries out because it's hotter, it hydrates quicker and so it's harder to work. So that's why they try to place the concrete early in the morning so that they don't have to fight that battle and they get a better finish and they don't have as many shriekish cracks as they would otherwise.
So this amended ordinance does allow for construction work and it also allows for if you're doing something special around your home, construction that's going to go on for many days, that you can get a permit through the city that says, "Hey, I'm going to be," and then it's given to, I don't know if they give it to the police department, we should, so they know these people have a permit. But that is allowable in here because we do know construction happens and it starts early in the morning, especially in the summer months when it's so hot. So it does address that in this current ordinance.
Okay, but you're asking about permit, but if we're a supplier, we're not the homeowner, we're out of compliance because we are supplying a product and it's our truck that's there. Even if the homeowner doesn't have the permit, we can still get cited because of the noise that we're creating.
Yeah, have you guys ever gotten cited? I know there's been some complaints you said, but have you ever been cited?
We have not been cited, but we were able to work it out with the homeowner, you know, to appease them or whatever, to get a resolve at that point. But you're talking about changing things and so every time things change, then it has, it has tripled down.
The construction portion of this is not changing, that part was not changed. So that wording stayed exactly the same. Yeah.
You're safe.
Yeah, I didn't get to see the ordinance, but when I saw this, I thought I better bring it up.
Yeah, no important information.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
The rule of the council?
So Robert, are you saying that it addresses all issues, right?
Yeah, the construction portion didn't change, it's the same as always, or same as it's been anyway. The part that changed was adding the language and about the time to start at eight PM. Any nuisance beyond eight PM could be addressed by our law enforcement.
Yeah, because some of these guys, they work all week and they say, "Well, I'm going to pour some cement a couple of yards Saturday." They don't have time to go get a permit Friday night, these guys will sell it in the morning.
Yeah, I think the permits are really designed for ongoing. You know, if somebody's pouring cement next door to my house and they wake me up at five one morning, I might be, "Well, jeez, that was annoying." But if it's an ongoing, like at the mid-school or, you know, someplace that it's constant and ongoing, I think that's where you would, it'd be good to have a permit, yeah.
Yeah, but as long as it covers like these guys here.
Right, right.
I don't have any problems with it.
No problem.
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead, Chief.
Go ahead, Chief.
The thing with the noise ordinance, like Mr. Meach is saying, is, I mean, big thing is like the loud party. Unreasonable problems going on in the neighborhood. Then the homeowners don't feel safe. But see, what we change, and I'm not advocating either way, but I just want to say this. So Mr. Windhorse is not coming out at eight PM to come and cite somebody. So it'll be law enforcement showing up and invariably what will happen is somebody's not going to be happy. And so we will try to deal with this like we always have, to be reasonable. Mr. Meach shows up at five in the morning to pour concrete because the sun rises at five o'clock, five fifteen, whatever it is. We will operate that way with that. But a lot of times what we get is somebody gets upset with law enforcement. I just wanted to say that if we shorten the time from two eight PM, push it back to eight PM, things that younger twenty-five-year-olds deem as reasonable music and loudness at eight PM, the older set of people may not see as reasonable. And we have to realize that both citizens have a right to what they're thinking is reasonable. If we put unreasonable limits on some person's right to have a party at their house once COVID nineteen is over, or whatever, and it's not real loud, but they just don't like rap music or they just don't like rock music. And see, I'm just throwing that out there because invariably, if it's not an unruly party and something where we have to take action against the homeowner, just be aware that that's something that could come back a little bit, generating complaints. So to me, ten o'clock, you know, even the party animals realize that ten o'clock is kind of like the bewitching hour, you know, kind of mallow up.
Uh, realize that ten o'clock is kind of like the bewitching hour, you know, kind of, kind of mallow up. Uh, but just wanted to say that.
Ten o'clock is the ones we have at State Parks, too?
It's it's nine, I think, at the State Parks.
Is is it's. Is it like seasonal or on the times, does it change like? When the time when the sun is out, you know, and it's nine o'clock, you know, it's, I mean, there's still people here, but winter times nine o'clock is like, hey, I'm just. Time you should go be going to bed, I mean, is there in there where it should be seasonal?
No, well, and when you think about people with young children, um, they go to bed earlier than we do as adults. You're putting your kids down so they can get up just for school tomorrow, the next day, right, not in the summer.
It's up to you guys, man, um, I would prefer the ten o'clock time, but, I mean, that's just me because of the summertime, so. But I'm good with whatever the council wants to do.
And what we do is set it at eight, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, that's that's what we're getting, the complaints is that there's a lot that goes on before ten. That people have no avenue to.
Well, the the sun doesn't go down. I don't think it's, uh, maybe not myself.
I I don't think that, uh, eight o'clock seems too early to me.
I didn't sign up to talk.
That's okay, go ahead.
So.
Identify yourself first.
I'm Diane Rowe, I'm citizen.
Now have at it.
Um, so I see both sides of the coin on the noise thing. Cause sometimes we have neighbors that, you know, it's been three o'clock the last two nights with fireworks.
Three o'clock in the morning, you bet you.
And I'm fifty and above, so let me just say I'm feeling it. But here's the deal, we've got people who have young kids. And they are the younger set, maybe they're in their twenties or their thirties, good for them. I wish, um. They do stay up later, you know, and the thing of it is, is like Eric said, when the sun's out, people stay up, they play. You know, some of these moms and dads that are working don't get home till late, this is the only time they have with their kids. And maybe they're in the backyard barbecuing and they're causing a little disturbance with the little kids because they squelch and holler and whatever, and. Maybe they have their radios on, but I agree that maybe if you're gonna change it, consider it being seasonal. Like if the sun's out and people are doing stuff during the summer, even if it's just their family, because we're talking about COVID. Um, I think that's reasonable, you know, let's let's give them some space. And then, you know, if it, if you feel like you have to do something with the noise ordinance, then maybe back it off to. Eight thirty or nine when it's not light. Most people, me included, during the winter, sun goes down, I'm like, oh, man, how long before I can honestly say I can go to bed? So I get it, but I think, you know, we kind of need to be. Gracious of of everyone, you know, flexible, and and the more restrictive you become. The more calls they are gonna have to answer. And if you're taking away family time and activities with their family, people are not gonna be happy, and that's totally not fair to our officers, you know? Is it something you wanna deal with? Cause I feel like they get stuck with a lot of stuff that really it was kind of petty and people should just be grownups.
I got one, one more comment, um.
Thank you, Don.
What if, what if we entertained, uh, like, during the school year, when schools are in session? That we have a little bit stricter time limit and during the summer months when everybody's off. You know, you do activities, like she said, with your kids and stuff like that, could we do something on that level?
We could.
Ten o'clock, um, summer hours and eight o'clock on winter hours.
I know my daughter, I think my daughter, if I'm incorrect, my daughter puts her kids to bed about eight o'clock during the school year.
Eight o'clock on the school time, and whatever you guys wanna do, I'm good with it, I mean, I'm just tired of. What's been going on these last four days, guys, it's been insane, two, three o'clock in the morning, and my dogs are, I would be more than, but yeah. All the three dogs are tripping, okay, Jake, he's. He's around guns, he knows what's going on, he don't bother him, but the other three, my good God, man, it's been insane.
Well, I would like to see us do like that seasonally.
A seasonal, okay, should we try that?
So let's go ahead and make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we do ten o'clock on during the summer months, eight, eight during the winter months when school is in session.
Okay.
Council Rojarte?
Aye.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Lucero?
Yes.
Council Playa?
Yes.
Done. Next one, North West and Wispel Council membership requirements, did we cut any money from them?
Um, we did not. It's, um, item number six in your packet, you have a letter from the Council of Governments, I believe we have Brandon Howell on the telephone.
Laura, Evan's also on there.
Oh, and Evan Williams, they're out of Gallup, so.
Where's Evan?
Hold on.
You can see his little block up there, or he's with Brandon. So in your packet, you have, um, a report that looks something like this, that. The gentleman put together for you, but the Council of Governments serves our region, they work with the county, the city, the village. Uh, McKinley County, Farmington, Aztec, um, several in our region, and they've been very helpful in helping us seek money. Um, I think I lost my statement among all this stuff that Donald gave me, oh, here it is. Donald wanted to make sure I let you know that the. Um, our project office works closely with the region's RTPO, which the Council of Governments facilitates. It's a branch of the Northwest New Mexico COG, and it deals with transportation planning and funding. The COG and the RTPO have been very supportive in assisting the city with planning projects. And gaining funds to see them come to fruition. Um, they've really helped us tap into a lot of the transportation dollars and work with us on that aspect, so. He wanted to make sure he noted that, um. Besides helping us put in applications for funding, Brandon just helped us get our application for C D B G funding. We applied for seven hundred thousand for the Washington Jefferson. Uh, Washington project, uh, the flooding project on Washington, I guess it is Washington and Jefferson. Um, they've helped us, um, with all the regional initiatives for economic development. Uh, I'm gonna let, Brandon and Evan may wanna highlight a few other things, but, um. We've we've been very pleased with the support we've gotten from the COG.
Can you get it, Laura?
They are on audio but not on video.
Okay.
Brandon, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, Evan, Evan, are you online? I am. You wanna go ahead and take this?
I'll let you, I'll let you go ahead.
All right. Mayor, Councilman, uh, thank you for having the COG, uh, on the agenda this evening. Uh, we wanted to, uh. Well, we wanted to renew our contract and our two-year work program with the City of Grants. Um, we, uh, recent events, we really appreciated the mayor kind kind of reinstating our full membership. Uh, that was reduced, uh, at one point, and we worked closely with the mayor to get that back to its normal rate. Um, one thing we want to reiterate is that the membership dues that you do pay to the Council of Governments. Uh, does get you a menu of services from planning, strategic planning, grant writing, uh, project theory. Uh, economic development work, transportation work, as Laura mentioned. Um, and it gives you access to six COG staff personnel, uh, to do a variety of things. We have, uh, supplied Laura with a new two-year work program that includes a lot of the items. Cause they are carried over, uh, that are included on that report that you have on, in front of you, um. But there's a a slew of things that we can, uh, add or subtract to this annual work program. Uh, we create these, uh, work programs to be fluid in nature. Um, we, yeah, we we just, uh, we enjoy our partnership with the city and we hope to continue with it.
Evan, are you there?
I sure am.
Uh, we restored your funding, Evan, because you proved that you were worth it, okay? And as long as you guys continue to prove that you're worth it, we won't have that problem, okay, so keep up the good work. Any questions on the council for the COG?
No.
Any questions at all? Um, Evan, you'll have me, you'll have Councilor Garcia here to my left, as on that one too, and Laura will be the alternate. Uh, did you need anything else from us tonight except to approve this?
That's it, Mayor, we appreciate it.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with the COG.
I make a motion that we approve the contract.
Second.
A second.
Council Rojarte?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Council Lucero?
Yes.
Council Playa?
Yes.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, police and fire funding, Jim, you wanna come up and talk now, Jim Rockham?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Council, I'm, uh, not from Grants, but I'm working here. Uh, but I also, uh, was a flight surgeon for twenty-three years with the, uh, Air Force and, uh, uh, two F sixteen squadrons. Um, and, uh, went through a six-week FBI academy. So I've been working with, uh, men and women in blue for my whole life. I'm actually here as an obiege of my physician, uh, and I know the problems of, uh, uh, drugs and I see patients all the time. Moms delivering babies with meth and coke and and just, it's just horrendous. I've had my, um, um, kids, when they were young, um, do ride-alongs with the police. Um, for several days, just so they get an idea of really what goes on on the streets. And if you, um, um, have not done that yourselves. And are considering defunding or reducing the funding for police and, uh, our services that protect us. You want to protect, um, the citizens. So are you gonna take the nine-one-one calls when we don't have enough police on the street? Um, because I would I would imagine the call center could just give out your phone numbers. But, uh, anyway, that's really the gist of it, I, uh, am very, very supportive of the police and very thankful that that we have them and all the others in here.
Thank you, Jim. Um, I got this on the, on the agenda, guys, because there was raises given out to the golf course, everybody at the golf course got a raise. Not one firefighter, not one COG got a raise. Okay, and they're the ones out there on the front line dealing with COVID and everything else. Um, there were three raises after you guys approved the agenda that went in after you guys had approved the. On the budget, okay? So what I'm asking for tonight is for you guys to freeze all of those raises until we can go into closed session and discuss these. And I will entertain a motion such, please.
So the.
Laura, I asked for a motion.
I'd I'd like to explain.
You wait, you wait, explain what, that you cut Gary's position and you divided that money up amongst the the golf people. But nobody else got a raise, why can't the chief of the fire department and the chief of the police department cut people and do the same thing? No, Laura, we will discuss this in a closed session at another time, we need to freeze these raises, especially the ones that were put in after the budget was approved by this council.
They were part of the budget.
No, they were not, they were put in after the budget, Laura, they were put in after the budget. I will entertain a motion, you guys.
So this was my memo sent to Kimberly on May fifth when I was home terminated, I was working on the budget. Because Kimberly did not know what to put where. So I had to give her my considerations, I do this every year, budget considerations. Second page, it shows personnel changes, all of that was part of the budget that you approved. Here's yours. Second page, it says personnel changes, that was given to Michelle, it was emailed to Michelle. Kimberly came by on May fourth and asked for, uh, she didn't know what to do with our budget stuff, so these were my considerations. And I do this every year, um, I have a couple more I can give you the past years. But, um, those were the restructuring. We took away a whole position at the golf course and we spread those duties among four other staff. So typically when we give people additional duties, they receive, uh, additional compensation for doing that.
Here's my, here's my comment on that.
That saved us thirty thousand.
She takes away one position and gives it, that, a position that is a worker out there. That they can't even cover the work they have now with everybody they got there. So she's gonna kill that position, and she's gonna distribute that work amongst less people for more money that isn't being accomplished right now.
I've I've been doing the same thing for the last four years. Um, in order to, um. Pay our, pay our staff better and have them be more efficient, we have a lot of ways.
And my whole point is, if we're gonna do that, then the first ones on the list need to be the police department and the fire department, not the golf course. Period, we're acting like the golf course is the most important thing here, and yes, it is.
It was not just the golf course.
I see who else got it.
We we cut one whole position that helped us save on benefits. Uh, we are saving about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Why aren't we giving raises to the cops and the firefighters of the first line on the COVID? They're out there every day, okay, but we're cutting positions to give raises to golf course maintenance people.
No, we.
Yeah, that's what happened here.
We're, we're looking at saving money.
By giving raises to golf course people, but nobody else in the city, Laura, especially the cops and the firefighters.
Um, two other staff got, you can see on the list, two golf.
And here's one for you guys.
Were given raises.
Here's the one for you that you're really gonna love. One cook at the golf course got her hours cut, one cook at the golf course got a three dollar an hour raise. The one that got her hours cut is the one she tried to fire for having a marijuana card. You wanna see a lawsuit, wait till you see the one that that girl files, okay, it's gonna be nothing compared to the one that we're facing from Laura.
And the mayor went around and and told people.
I didn't tell anybody, Laura, okay, no matter what you say. You're entitled to your opinion though, because this is America.
Part of the budget, and if Michelle can verify that Kimberly asked for.
Three dollars an hour for a cook at the golf course while another one has her hours cut is wrong. Period, three dollars an hour to the supervisor at the golf course. And all them guys out there at the golf course get a raise, but not one of my police officers do, not one of my firefighters do. They're dealing with COVID every single day, their lives are threatened by that.
And you don't think I'm dealing with COVID or the water department's dealing with COVID?
Why did the golf course get a raise, Laura, and nobody else?
Because they had to take on additional duties.
No, they didn't, you should have hired someone to take Gary's position because they can't cover the work out there now with Gary there.
And I already.
All you're doing is taking a position away and the golf course is gonna fall further and.
I already got a compliment from Ralph Lucero's. On how well the staff, how hard they were working, because that was part of the issue, if we go away with this position, you're expected to do more.
I'm asking you to freeze these raises until we can discuss this in a closed session. Period, because they make no sense, no sense at all. They can't keep up with the work at the golf course right now, and we're gonna cut a position and decide that money up amongst everybody else out there. They cannot do the work they have now, you know that, right? I know.
I know they're out there, they're cutting.
They're out there, okay, but we're gonna cut a position.
I don't see what you're talking about when they can't do the work, what's not happening?
Well, the list that I brought in from written from Ralph Lucero, it was a page long on the front line. And I gave it to Laura.
Ralph Lucero just came by and told me what a great job they were doing.
After I gave you that letter.
No.
Yes, Laura, I gave you that letter how long ago? The one for Kim at the golf course typed, no signature on it, it's amazing how you forget, you know?
A letter giving.
Giving Kim things to do on the front line? All the work that he'd be doing on the front line, and now that work's been done, and that's what Ralph's talking about, not talking about anything else.
You didn't give me a letter.
Yes, I did, Laura, it's just like, I guess I didn't tell you to meet me at eight o'clock in the morning.
No, you did tell me to do that. No, I didn't do that conveniently, I just forgot, I apologize.
Like I said, I.
I will entertain a motion. I don't see anything here where, um, where there was, uh, raises given, uh, for the budget for the golf course.
This for the, this was what was given to Kimberly to put in the budget that you approved on, was it May sixteenth? Um, and I worked on it while I was at home, I was trying to figure out, I was looking for this for you today, I. I got a heads up that this was gonna come up tonight, and, um. So I, it was on my home computer because I worked on it from home and emailed it to Michelle to give to Kimberly, she included all of this in the budget. The cops got a raise a couple of years ago, they got a three percent extra raise beyond what, um, the other staff got. And the firefighters, we added hazard pay to their pay this year because they weren't getting hazard pay. And that had been a big, uh, controversy on why police got it and firefighters did not, so.
We're giving golf course guys raises and no one else in the city, we're giving Donald a raise, which Donald basically pays for his own position, I don't have a problem with that. Okay, I have a problem with giving raises, a three dollar an hour raise to a cook while you're cutting another cook's hours. I have a problem with you giving a three dollar an hour raise to a superintendent to, to distribute more work out there.
Because Kim has to be out on the grounds more than her head cook has to do the ordering. Um, she's responsible for more of the supervision, so, you know.
Let's see how that lawsuit goes.
While speaking for myself personally on this, on this particular issue, a lot of this is before my time. And I haven't had the, the opportunity to process everything that's going on. I'd like to have further review to be able to process more about what's going on in the city budget. So that's, that's my personal perspective that some of it I don't understand. Who's up, who's down, who's, who's going around and-
So typically-
I'll entertain a motion to freeze these raises until we can discuss this in a closed session.
That's not fair to the people that have already started their raise. We're already past July one.
It's not fair what you did to give them those raises, Laura, and blow the rest of the staff off, especially the firefighters and police officers. Period. That's what's not fair. That's no way fair.
So if you give somebody additional duties, we've typically given them a raise. Um, somebody in our code enforcement office, uh, we have raised her duties. She was also given an increase for taking on, we changed her job description. So that is typical practice.
But at the golf course, you're cutting a position and giving more to, to the people that, there's so much else there they cannot handle right now.
Well, Kim, Kim has taken on the responsibility that Gary had. And I see her on the golf course. She's on a machine. She's cutting fairways. She's cutting greens. She's also um-
Does it matter?
Wait, wait, let me talk. Uh, she's also scheduling some of the maintenance projects that they have to do in a week. So she's taking on Gary's responsibility and also managing, you know-
The pro shot.
And like I said, Rick, they're not even doing it.
They are doing it.
No, they're not.
Not that many days to about one.
Bending that power is there too.
I support the golf course.
Oh, we know that, Rick. Okay, but how do we justify giving a three dollar an hour raise to people at the golf course? When we couldn't even give our police and our firefighters an hour, a dollar an hour last year? But we're going to give the superintendent and we're going to give a cook a three dollar an hour raise, but we're going to tell that lieutenant out there that might get shot tomorrow, no. You're not worth it. That's insane, guys.
Did we give the police and the part of, of raise last year?
Last year, everybody got a raise last year. The entire staff got a raise last year.
The police department had a higher percentage raise-
And they earned it.
Two years ago.
And that was two years ago.
Yes.
So this year, we're just going to give it to the golf course and to the code enforcement and nobody else? That's insane, especially three dollars an hour, guys. For me, for me, guys, that's just stupid.
When, when the depart, when the department heads do their evaluation between January and March, they make, often make recommendations for a raise for one of their staff members who-
Chief, how many people did you put in for a raise?
Because of longevity.
How many people did you put in for a raise? For their, for their fine work out there. How many people did you put in for a raise?
He didn't ask for the raises this year.
Hang on, hang on. I'm asking him here.
When I spoke was, okay, so to be fair, what the manager's saying is, uh, in my budget, when I met with the manager earlier in the year, I was told we're not going to be giving raises-
Any raises, right? That's what we all said.
If this happens. So one thing I had requested then, and I have not received word was to, I have a corporal that's running a shift and I would like to make that, recreate that position to a sergeant. Today, uh, over the weekend or last week, I received, received three requests from, from uh, officers for meritorious raises, which I concur with, um, because they are hard workers. Um, and they-
And he just brought those two in today.
Yeah, right. So, no, right. And I'm not trying to ambush anybody. So when you ask, how many have I requested? As of today, I requested for four. I've not received an answer. So I'm not, this is not me trying to come back at anybody.
No, this is me, chief, trying to do what's right for the citizens of Grants. And giving golf course people a raise while our cops and our firefighters don't get one, I've got a malfunction there. A real bad one. Somebody out there cutting grass is getting three dollars an hour. My cops that are out there facing criminals, chasing criminals, are getting nothing. There's my malfunction, guys. How does the golf course take that bit of a priority?
Let me chime in just for a minute. So, chief.
Yes, sir.
You and your staff, thank you very much.
Oh, you're most welcome, sir.
You guys kick ass out there. I appreciate you guys. One hundred percent.
Thank you very much for that.
Kim, if you're watching, your staff, we appreciate you for what you guys do. It's just not cutting grass out there. You guys are trying to bring people to our community so we can uh, get the visitors, gain that grocery tax and start to build our community back. Then, you know, as we start to build, you know, obviously raises will come. Everyone out there works for the staff. I don't care, um, if you're picking trash or you are running a loader. You guys are all equal. You're all, are part of the city to make us successful. And we need to collaborate and try to gain some momentum in our town so every department can flourish. And um, the way we're arguing now, it ain't going nowhere. We're just going in two separate directions.
So how do you follow the raises, Eric?
I asked the community, the raises?
Yeah, how do you feel, how do you feel about golf course getting three dollars an hour in?
If she deserved it, good for her.
If she deserved it, that's a big if, ain't it? Three dollars an hour, the cops didn't deserve it.
That's why we're, that's why Laura's the manager and Kim's the manager of the golf course.
Kim makes-
I'm not going to go there and micromanage somebody.
Kim makes half of what our police chief makes and she, she makes very little compared to what our police officers make.
Yes, and she's taking on more.
Go ahead, Diablo. Step up here. Tell us what you got on your mind.
I hadn't intended to say anything tonight, but-
Well, that's okay. Go ahead.
So, again, I see both sides of the coin. I, I try to be pretty level. Um, I understand a position being absorbed by the other staff and in so doing, spreading out that positions, you know, wage. I get that. Here's where I have a problem. Our officers are on the streets three sixty-five twenty-four seven.
Every day, other day or not.
We're in a spot now, this is an emergency situation supposedly. We're seeing increased crime. We're seeing increased violence. We're seeing all these situations. Personally, I don't see that hitting the golf course. To me, as a citizen, the golf course, yeah, it may bring visitors. But right now, we're not even seeing a lot of that because everybody's home scared to death they're going to contract this virus. And because of the fear mongering, it's even worse. Golf is a seasonal sport. These guys, they're not seasonal. And with the increase in all the problems that we've got, I can tell you personally, at my business, we've already had three incidents in the last month. Which is more than the entire time that we've been open. I have friends that are having problems that have never had problems before with violent offenders, people coming and causing problems, getting in people's faces. This is an issue that you can't send a social worker to. You need an officer. You can't call somebody, this, it, it doesn't make sense to me. We need to take care of our officers right now in this time above all. And the golf course has its place, yes, but like I said, we're supposedly in an emergency situation and we're seeing this increase and, and violence and crime and all this stuff. And we see it in my neighborhood. And I know others of you guys do too. I can't call the golf course and say, hey, send somebody over. I've got a guy in my backyard. We need to take care of our officers and put the golf course on, on a back burner for now. I'm not saying forever. Yeah, our golf course is great. My husband golfed. It does bring visitors in, but I don't think it's bringing in those kind of numbers right now. And I do think we're having those kinds of numbers that would support the raise to our emergency personnel.
So irregardless to the raise, I saved thirty-five thousand dollars at the golf course by cutting a position and spreading those duties among others. So that gives us more, more money to do other things, maybe help, you know, supplies for the police department.
Remove one open police officer position.
Those were ones that were never filled.
Were filled, but you removed them. So now there's no money for them if we are able to fill them.
Kimberly had left that in the budget and it was all zeroed out and I was just telling, it had been zeroed out for a year. I told her, keep that off of there. It's too confusing if we're not filling those spots. They were blank spots in the budget.
Police aid service aid.
We have twenty officers. That's more than we've ever had.
Remove two open positions.
We have four service aides. That's more than we've ever had. Five, five service aides?
Uh, ma'am, we, we uh-
It doesn't matter.
We had five when I came on, uh, five service aides. We gave up the one service aide to hire that twenty.
We've never had five hired ever since I've been here.
Actually, we, actually, we did. That's what I was-
Actually, we did.
What, that's when I got on and that first year, we were utilizing that fifth position as a, and that's what I explained to you at that time. That fifth position was on the streets. Four were at the hospital and the fifth position, or, or two were, I'm sorry. We just hired four, the, the two, the two second ones.
Yeah, we never were able to fill all five.
When we had the three positions, two were at the hospital and the one was being u, used to train on the streets for FTO. Um, so now we've got the four, but we don't have that one. In other words, the hospital pays for the four, but we, the city used to have that, that one position.
But we never filled that position.
We, we actually did.
We've only had four at one time.
Okay, well, okay, we did. That's why I used to train Justin and, uh, those guys with, with that one. Okay. Thank you.
If we could fill that position now, would that help the police department?
Well, we no longer have that position. That position is not there.
Not in our current budget.
Right, right, so.
Got away with it. That's my whole point. We're cutting cops and giving raises to the, to the golf department.
But I'll say this, so we, we, we lost that position.
Right.
But I gained a police officer. Okay, so that's, that's how that went. And we appreciate that position better because that's a position that immediately we have a certified officer to answer calls on the streets. So.
So we, you guys just adapted?
We, we adapted, yes. So that's what happened there.
It got changed to a different-
Yes.
Category.
Yes, ma'am.
So what, what are we discussing here? We're discussing a, a three, a three dollar raise compared to-
To nobody. For no raises for anybody else. That's what we're talking about, Eric. We're talking about the golf course getting raises.
How many people the golf course got a raise?
Every one of them.
No, not every one of them.
Every one of them, but one.
Well, that money was already being spent at the golf course because Gary was there.
Yeah, and that's what we should do, hire another position.
Gary was tired, so we had extra money and we gave extra uh, uh, workload to some of the managers.
And they can't handle the workload, Rick. That's why my point is to hire that position.
They're out there doing it every day, Modi. I see it every day. I see it. I don't have to think. I see it.
You say so. I do. I walk, I walk my dogs. I don't play golf. I got better things to do than chasing the white ball around.
Because you don't, you're not very good at it.
No, because I don't waste my time. I'd rather go shoot because I'm real good at that.
Anyway, to go any further, uh, I see the justification for giving people raises from the guilt more responsibilities. And, you know, during this time, there's a lot, hey, one more sentence. There's a lot of people coming from other counties to play our golf course. Albuquerque, Valencia County, McKinley County, San Juan, Burn Hill, uh, I can name a few more, but these people have to wash down these cards because of the COVID situation, right? So they're, they're putting themselves in a hazard situation.
I just have a comment.
I think that's deserved.
Hang on, hold on. Hang on, girl. Hang on. So you think it's deserved and that cops, the cops not getting anything?
No, no, they, they're not making as much as the cops.
It doesn't, the cops do a lot more than them too.
Well, they, well, we're not talking about the cops. We're talking about the golf course and their duties.
The cops, bro. Yes, I do. That's why I got it down as a police and fire fight. Yes, I do. Yes, I do. It's about safety to the people.
Typically, Eric-
It's also the safety of the people on the golf course too.
Typically, Eric, department heads and the manager decide individual raises for the staff because we work with them. And the council decides if we're doing across-the-board raises. And so that is why every year, uh, I and the department heads have given raises to various people for various reasons. Maybe they've been with us twenty years now and it's a longevity. Or maybe we're trying to get their pay to where the standard is so that we can keep them and they don't go to the Department of Transportation. Or they've just been busting their butt and we feel like they deserve it. So I have given, and I try to spread them out. I, I think I'm very fair. Uh, I don't have any favorites among my staff. Um, I have some that are a pain in the butt, but who isn't, right? And they could say the same for me.
Kim's raise ain't on here.
Those-
Kim's raise ain't on here. Um, neither is the cook's raise ain't on here. I don't see any of them on here.
The golf course ones were not on there because-
They're not on there and that's the budget they proved.
Gary had not actually decided he was going to retire yet. He hadn't given me his notice, so that didn't get on the list.
That's the one they approved.
Well, it's still incorporated because it's part of the budget because his salary was part of what was used to split that out and save money by not filling that position. You know, I, I can't tell somebody, oh, I'm going to give you more duties, but hey, you get paid the same. You're, you've got to work more hours and, uh, too bad. Well, the, those raises are really up to the department heads and the manager. The finance director who gave you this information gave, gave her staff raises in March. And her staff got their raises in March. Most of us typically give ours with the new budget because we try to budget for it. So, um-
On that note-
So, chief, chief, so you, you, you said you have uh, four that you got putting in for raises. So how does that work? So you're putting in four now. We have money allocated in somewhere here or we wait till the next fiscal year? Or how does that work? If our grocery tax goes up, we can share the wealth or how does this work?
Yeah, we can look at that in a couple of months and see how we're doing and do a budget adjustment.
Yeah, my, 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 sorry, chief, one second.
No, go ahead.
I believe that May is going to be very good for our grocery tax. And this is like any manager comes in and says, hey, man, I got a department that, they're really kicking ass right here. And so you say you have four and you have specific reasons why these people deserve to have a raise. And I'm sure the council, um, understand that, you know, if we can give raises to everybody or, or the, or, or, or the police, uh, the, the ones you recommend, um, it's um, it's good. So we would like to do that to, you know, of course, everybody across the stage, but, you know, the managers have their opinions on, you know, who should got it. So maybe Kim said, hey, I got this person, they got the golf course, they got this, or the road department, the chief of police, the fire, whatever it is. Um, but if we, I'm pretty sure we're going to have a pretty good month in May. I have, have a great feeling. So I, hopefully, like Laura says, I don't know what they, as far as budget or something, but I'm sure there's something that we can look forward to and, and hopefully make someone's day and give them a raise because the city did better. And I don't care what department you're in. I mean, everybody's here as a team. I, I do appreciate fire and, 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 and the, the police chief because you guys do, do, I mean, I rode around with Lieutenant Modest, opened my eyes. I'm shocked. I'm one hundred percent backing you guys up. As far as uh, budget cut or whatever, I believe that May is going to be really good for us and I'm hoping that Laura can, um, swing it, you know, I'm pretty sure we uh, we're going to be act, actually probably in the, in the green hopefully by May. So, um, it's really not a big subject to be arguing about here, Mayor.
That is.
No, it's not.
That is.
Um, we're all a team.
That is a big subject for you though, Eric. You don't even take the Constitution or oath of the series.
Right, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Were you, did you, were you asking me a question?
No, I, I was. I, I said four and I think you did say four people, right?
Right, I, and that was just today. Okay, so uh, three of them put in a request. The fourth one I had put in a request earlier in the year.
And Mike put it in.
And that's why we wanted, we wanted you to put out a request and hopefully, um, as a manager, you put in a request because they deserve it. So hopefully, uh, your direct supervisor in the council, you know, we can figure out, you know, how to do something.
So, you know, for this fiscal year or last fiscal year, we're a quarter million dollars under budget, okay? And uh, so we were doing a lot to say-
What you should have done was put that in for raises for your people, chief, instead of giving it back in general for us. That's what you- Should have done was put that in for raises for your people, Chief, instead of giving it back to the general fund, that's what you should have done. Should have never put it back to the general fund, because now your people didn't get a raise.
So, again, we're trying to save money, and so that wasn't done, uh, because of, we thought there was a freeze on.
Uh, yeah, and that's the thing that kicks my butt, guys, is we all agreed back in February before you were elected and we would freeze all raises, guys. Nobody in the city would get a raise, that's what we said, and then I asked, and all of a sudden, there's.
But if people move to different positions and with more responsibility, if you have an officer go from a sergeant to a lieutenant, we're gonna give them a raise, right, no matter what the budget's like.
Yep, she got sergeant.
We can't ask them.
You got a corporate acting as a sergeant right now, you're not giving him a raise.
Well, uh, just to be clear, uh, sir, that position is not, does not exist yet.
Yes, that's.
So that's what I was asking the city.
But he's doing, but he's doing the extra work, just like the people at the golf course, but he didn't get no raise. I mean, it's it's hypocrisy, it's total hypocrisy here, guys. That's what it is, so if you don't wanna give, you guys wanna go ahead and keep them golf courses raised, don't make the motion. I'm saying that we need to freeze those raises until we see what's going on here, until we can talk to people. That's what I'm saying, guys, go ahead, Carolyn, what do you got to say about it?
At at the last meeting I attended, we were talking about budget cuts and layoffs. Wouldn't it be beneficial to take one of the people that you're fixing to lay off and put into that position and save a job? Versus giving a raise?
We're not making any moves until we figure out what's 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 coming into this next, uh, few weeks as far as money coming in here. There's, there's, there's a big what ifs, and the what ifs is, in my opinion, I'm pretty sure we're gonna do pretty well, so.
Yeah, for May we will, probably June, July too, and then the the money runs out, stimulus money runs out.
People are.
It doesn't run up to the end of May, I mean, in July.
Do you run a business, Modi? No, do you see a trend? No, do you know what you're talking about? No.
Yes, I do.
I know as a small business owner, if I let somebody go because there wasn't enough money and gave somebody else a raise, I would be so upset.
That's why Grant says.
We haven't had any layoffs, Carolyn, and I'm not anticipating it. As people leave, we're not filling positions, and we're using that money better. So if we have layoffs, yeah, that that's not gonna be good, but we're not anticipating that at this point.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, I asked for a motion, do I get a motion? Going once, going twice, going three times. No motion to freeze the raises, so all the city employees eat crap except for the golfers. Uh, kind of final comments, Fred?
Okay. I got, uh, a few comments, if you will indulge me for a few minutes. Just wanted to say at the, at the outset that, uh, the past few months, I have experienced something that we, I think we as a world have never experienced. And, uh, I think that we're right now, this country, and perhaps probably the world is in the middle of a revolution. It's in the middle of, uh, I guess you could call it a civil war between one side and the other. Uh, I do wanna say to the mayor himself, uh, now, you may agree with me, may not agree with me, uh, I, uh, I want you to know, Mr. Hicks, that I applaud your passion for the Constitution of the United States. I applaud your zeal for defending it, and I think it's very admirable that you, that you have stood strong on this issue. But at the same time, I would like to remind you that our our great constitution that we have in this nation was put together by the founders, the founders which were were strong Judeo-Christian, uh, Christians. Had ju- strong Judeo-Christian beliefs. Uh, something that I was thinking about the other day. I'd like to read something here that just, just a line long, it says, uh, and you probably all recognize it. This, this document says, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by the Creator with certain unarguable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Just wanted to say for the record that our freedoms in this country are God-given rights. They're God-given rights, our coun- our framers framed our constitution to embody those rights, but they do come from God himself, not from the government.
From the government, she can't take them away from us, guys.
And I would remind, I would remind you, uh, Mayor Hicks, that because we had heard to these beliefs of, uh, that we are under God and we profess to be Christians that have accepted God into our lives, that we treat one another the way our Lord and Savior would have us treat one another with respect, with forgiveness, with compassion. And, uh, I I wish that we had more people, not only in our city, but in our state, that had the zeal of this man right here. But I would ask you, Mayor, to also, uh, temper your your zeal with wisdom in the way you treat your fellow, your felt. We we are, we wanna do our best to work with you, to to be, to be good citizens for our community, but I think it takes cooperation between all of us to work and not enforcing or forcing our will upon one another. And those are my comments.
Eric?
Thank you, Fred, Mr. Adarthy. So. Great weekend, did anybody go to the rodeo? One of the things that I I wanted, I put a shout out to the the Rodeo Association and everybody that's associated with that. Um, I'm not a cowboy, um, but what they do over there is amazing. I mean, I was hooked, I, I've never been, I've been to the cowpox, but I've never been to the rodeo. And when I came across the the top there, I don't remember what time it was, it was a Friday evening to go to go watch. As I came across the top, I was amazed on how many, uh, trailers and trucks there were and people, and I was like, wow, this is amazing, and what I saw was was actually was money, you know, I seen people coming to our community for, it could either be the golf course or it could be our 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 rodeo, because, uh, those trucks take fuel, those people need food. Those horses might need some hay or something, so our our, uh, who sells Diamond G might get some benefit from that. But at the end of the day, you know, it was, it was pretty exciting, I I I didn't, uh, my daughter, you know, and she's like, Daddy, I want a pony, like every kid says. And after I saw like, uh, uh, Noreen Canada and, uh, Judy Dean just hauling buns, and I was like, hooked. And I was, wow, and my daughter said, Daddy, I wanna do that. So it was pretty cool to go out there and see that, I've never been, uh, uh, out there to the Rodeo Association or rodeo. And, um, I do encourage the citizens that we say sometimes, hey, there's not very much to do in in our community. I say, go check out that rodeo because that's impressive, and then to take care of the grounds and what goes on over there, it's, the Rodeo Association, my hat's off to you guys, because that was amazing. And, um, I hear we're gonna, hopefully, if we don't get any, um, problems, you know, we're gonna improve the rodeo grounds to start to get people to come to our community a lot more and more, I just didn't realize. You look in that parking lot, there was probably three or three and a half million dollars worth of trucks and trailers there. Those people have money, they wanna come here to somewhere where it's fun, beautiful, has a great time here, they wanna return. So, uh, I encourage the Rodeo Association to, uh, uh, keep driving, because that was awesome, thank you.
Great.
Uh, Police Chief, tell us, um, I just wanna say again to your your group, you guys are doing a great job, keep up the good work. Appreciate all you do, I wish, uh, the fire chief was here too, to, uh, give him my sentiment also, but thank you.
Fred, play it up.
I wanna echo what Eric said. We got Gabby, her daughter, my grandkids, they're rodeo. Well, you know, they, right? So I know all about rodeos, I try to keep them away because it costs a lot of money.
They need a sign that says that.
The the doobies, trailers, usually see the trailers we got at the house, they might forget it, you know, but. Other than that, guys, excuse me, I was at the economic development meeting last week, Laura and I. And there was, I hope this comes to being, there's a projects update, it's on June thirtieth. There's a transmix project. This project takes fuel and oil waste products and processes them back to their original state of fuels, jet fuel, diesel gasoline, et cetera, are variable for resale. This project is already over there going to Albuquerque, to Hagerly, to the right, see all those tanks and stuff right there? Well, Laguna doesn't want them there.
The Nalos.
The Laguna, you belong to Laguna on the right side.
The Nalos Nation there?
On the other side of the freeway.
The other side is the, the Laguna, to the south Laguna. The, what they're trying to do is get them, they're trying to go back to Parker, Arizona. They want, the the people, the principal want to move, but, uh, what they're trying to do now is move and move here to Milan Industrial Park, instead of moving them four hundred miles away, they could move it a hundred miles away to Milan. And they think, uh, salary of fifty-five thousand and some lower, of course, you know, of course, that's what they tell us, you know, they're paying, but there's fifteen to thirty jobs initially. Another one that's, I think it's gonna come into being, it's gonna be in Milan, western Milan, in the old Ball Ranch, uh, northwest of Milan. Uh, this project takes live cattle, possibly other types of meat and processing them for second tier butchering for retail cuts in real restaurants and stores. This operation will be an indoor facility with one and two trucks per day. It is projected to process up to eight hundred to a thousand head per day. It's a employee, let's say fifteen to thirty people, average salary is forty thousand. And the the principal, the guy is trying to make it up, owns the cattle ranch, who also supplies six, sixty percent of the beef, beef. The principal owns the land which the facility will be built on. The was, the principal has been approved for financing the construction of the facility. And it will break ground this fall. It'll be operation by winter of twenty twenty, spring of twenty twenty-one. And, uh, another one that's, I don't know, this one, uh, there's a truck, and I've been wanting one of trucks up, but this one is a truck terminal project. Do you know what that, okay, the project will require interstate access and twenty acres for a seven-hundred unit trucking terminal. And the principal is interested in moving from California. So those are.
Do they wanna come to Sevulca?
Well, then, if they can, if we can give them like the twenty acres there. Yeah, but the meat processing company and that, uh, transmix project is in Arizona, they're interested in coming here. I think they already got him moving to the Milan Industrial Park, you know. And, uh, there's another one, an industrial cluster, cluster project. They're working with McKinley Paper on on retaining that current employee base due to the exit of Tri-State G E T McKinley Paper Company. They will need to find a way to generate steam on their own, that's what they're trying to be a state plant, you know. So McKinley County has leased state land south of the Tri-State property to evaluate for a complimentary industrial park that is rail-served, the railroad is right there. So, I miss anything, you know, that's, that's what they told me, so. It looks good, guys, I hope it comes to being. And thank you, guys.
I'm gonna echo what Fred said, we are in a war here, guys, and it is war with the communists, okay? They call them progressive Democrats, there are no Democrats left in this state or in this country. They're stone cold Marxist communists, guys, and what they're doing to us is all they move to destroy this country and take away your riches, your your liberties. The governor called me a criminal, okay, for standing up for your rights. She called me a criminal, they can't, can't give me a statute or any law that I broke, but she's calling me a criminal. When she's the one that's criminal, because I can quote you statute and law that she has broken her own health orders. And I would encourage all of you that have taken this oath to stand up for that oath at all cost. As Samuel Adams said, "Our liberties must be protected at all hazard," period. Period, why? Because they're God-given, just like Fred said, and this is what Samuel Adams said. They're given to us by God, not by no government. And if they were not given us to us by God, they were earned by our fathers with their leisure, their liberty, their estates, and their blood. And that's where we're at now, as they take us further and further, further into this rat hole. And I agree with Eric, things are probably gonna be good till the end of July, middle of August, and then things are gonna get really bad. Because the coal mine's shutting down, another hundred and ten jobs, those things may or may not come, we're praying that they do. Okay, we've already lost three hundred and fifty jobs.
Think positive, Modi.
I am thinking positive, yes, I am, Fred, I'm the one that was helping push that stuff before you ever got on the day. Chief, oh no, I've been here for how many years, Red, doing nothing, right?
You haven't learned nothing.
Oh, okay, I haven't learned nothing, wow, thank you, Fred, thank you, Fred. Thank you, Fred, okay, I haven't learned nothing.
You're trying to push off what you think on all of you.
I got, no, it's not what I think, it's the Constitution, Fred, it's the Constitution, Fred.
Fred told you.
Fred.
That you cannot push off what you think on us.
Okay, but the Constitution is the Constitution, and when you, yes, I do, because without the Constitution, we don't have a country. And when you don't uphold your oath of office to support the Constitution, then you're nothing less than a liar or a traitor. I'll entertain a motion to shut this meeting down.
Motion to shut it down.
Second, I second.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes, yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.